Good morning. Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the invocation. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, stir us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the PyAC of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Extentions, motion passes eight zero zero. I do want to note that Ms. Droof is very sorry that she is out today. She is not feeling well at all, and she's graduating on Friday, and she's doing her very best to get better before graduation. So she does extend her apologies to everyone. Establish agenda order. Ms. Ritchie.
I'd like to, because they contain information that needs to get to schools as soon as possible, move that the board take two personnel items, four point oh one and four point oh two, out of order and hear them after the PyAC report, which is item two point one L.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes eight zero zero.
I also'd like to move that we remove six point oh seven from the agenda.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes eight zero zero. Alright, next item on the agenda, recognitions. Are there any recognitions today, Mrs. Perkins?
I don't believe there are. Thank you.
Alright, then we'll move on to item two point zero six, Educator of the Month. Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Ms. Burge. When the selection committee for the Educator of the Month program reviewed nomination forms for our June awardee, they had the benefit of reading several perspectives in support of our winner. The nomination submitted by Crofton Middle School's Principal, Maria Williams, included several strong personal recommendations in addition to comments made by stakeholders. So here's what the stakeholders had to say about Assistant Principal, Mrs. Chastity Ludd, our Educator of the Month for June. From a student. From a student, Mrs. Ludd is very proactive to ensure that I take my education seriously. She encourages excellence, expects tenacity, demands respect, and loves her students. One day I would like to pursue my dream of being a teacher or a lawyer because I look up to Mrs. Ludd as one of my role models. She inspires me to know that anything is possible as long as I give one hundred percent. From a parent, as Vice Principal, Mrs. Ludd is a wonderful administrator. She immediately responds to our emails and phone calls. Our son feels safe and welcomed at Crofton Middle, and that is in large part to Mrs. Ludd and her warm, bubbly disposition. Academically, as a staunch advocate for diversity and positive behavior, she has helped Crofton Middle be a safe haven for all students with varying socioeconomic backgrounds. She is a proud champion, looking out for the academic and social needs of all Eagle students, parents, and teachers at Crofton Middle School. From a teacher, Mrs. Ludd is someone who epitomizes the best traits of those in higher education. She is a motivated, positive-thinking leader who always projects a smiling, can-do attitude, someone who is never too busy to counsel those who seek her guidance. Mrs. Ludd's persona is one that inspires me to go that extra mile, and I am thankful for having the opportunity to work with such a great role model. From a colleague, extremely organized, thoughtful, and detail-oriented when completing any task that she is asked to take on. She takes her job very seriously, and she works to make sure that she produces a quality product in all that she does. She is student-driven and seeks to build long-lasting relationships with students and families. Chastity Ludd, your work ethic is one to imitate. You strive to be accurate, professional, and effective in each task. Students enjoy your full-of-life personality, teachers respect your knowledge, and parents appreciate your dedication to see a problem through. You hold yourself to high standards because you care about the people you serve, and the board is proud to recognize you as Educator of the Month for 2014. Congratulations. Please join me up front.
Well, congratulations, Ms. Ludd.
Thank you. I don't have a lot of words, but right now I don't have any.
So how did it get you up here today?
Um, Ms. Williams told me I had a scheduling meeting, and so I was coming with the scheduling mind frame, not the... So, yeah.
And who's here to see you on this joyous day?
Uh, my mom.
Hi, Mom.
Um, my Uncle Larry. I saw him somewhere. I don't know where he is.
Ah, there he is.
Um, my cousin Brooke, and my Aunt Twyla. And, uh, I think it's... Oh, I don't know who else. I see some other people. I'm thinking, but I don't want to put them on the spot, so...
Welcome everybody.
Everybody else, too. Thank you.
I've got this wonderful certificate for you.
Thank you.
And a nice little bell here.
I can ring that.
Oh, I'm sure we can. Oh, and everybody in Annapolis High School, they do remember you. You still are a part of the family there.
Oh, thank you.
They'd love to see you come back sometime.
Alright, will do. Will do. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Before we move on to our next recognition, I want to tell those people who look like they're about to get up not to leave yet because after our break, we're going to have pictures out in the hallway with our award winners, and we need you to be here for those pictures. So we'll be breaking in just a little while. Thank you. Next is the Employee of the Month. Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we honor an employee in our school system who is a leader, an organizer, a troubleshooter, and a true professional. And with a multitude of responsibilities, she has feathers that never get ruffled. Deborah Stickney, Business Manager at Arundel High School, came highly recommended by her colleagues as Employee of the Month. The letter of recommendations submitted by her principal sums up her talents and skills she employs to perform her job successfully. At this time, I want to read the quote from the recommendation. Ms. Stickney takes care of all facility and some financial matters at Arundel High. In addition, she supervises the secretarial, operations, and food service teams. She is pleasant, organized, efficient, and professional at all times. As a supervisor, she supports and advocates for the needs of the teams. She holds each employee responsible for completing tasks and provides staff development to advance their skills. She also participates in continuing education to improve her own skills and to become certified in related fields. She works well beyond her hours each day and is conscientious about any tasks assigned to her. In the time that she's been the Business Manager, she has supervised construction projects, prepared the facility each summer for county-wide professional development, visits from the governor, the MSD Summer Academies, and various community events. She also supervises the graduation preparation, which, by the way, you did a great job on Friday. Having graduation on Carroll Field requires many different preparations and contracts to be completed. To a high school principal, it's important to have a reliable and responsible person as a Business Manager. Ms. Stickney is not only reliable and responsible, she is caring and compassionate. She is the other half of making the high school function and operate at its highest potential. I highly recommend that she be recognized for her dedication and commitment to Arundel High School and Anarundel County Public Schools, respectfully, Ms. Sharon Stratton, Principal. Ms. Stickney, you initiate, develop, and maintain practices and programs that result in a safe, clean, and well-run school. You're a good listener and an excellent resource for many people in your building. In the words of a department chair at Arundel, "You get things done." So for these reasons and many more, the Board of Education is happy to honor you, Employee of the Month for June 2014. Congratulations, and please come forward.
So we have this certificate for you, obviously, and then we also have a bell. And how did they get you here today?
We had a meeting to come to, so...
No complaints about an Arundel High graduation, right? Okay, good. And you have, who else is here today?
I have my mom, and my dad, and my son, and his fiance, and my grandson, my first grandson, my sister-in-law, and then my sister.
Great. Well, we want to thank you on behalf of the system. I know, obviously, being at graduation and throughout the whole time through the year, you do an excellent job, and the Arundel High School staff also appreciates everything of you. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the next item, I want to take a minute to recognize the outstanding work of a man who really makes these honors happen. Tony Anzalone spent forty years in our school system as a guidance counselor, and I suspect in other roles, too. Well into retirement, he continues to give back by coordinating the Employee and Educator of the Month committees and engages in numerous other activities with the Retired School Personnel Association and beyond. This is a time-consuming task, but one that rewards richly deserving employees for their hard work. So on behalf of the board, Tony, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you continue to do for us. The next item on the agenda is the Volunteer of the Month. Ms. Nally.
Thank you. Box tops. When redeemed, they only raise ten cents each. Who would have thought that cutting out those tiny pink squares on boxes of cereal would be a good way to raise money for a school? Seems like a lot more tedium and hassle than a good thing. Right? Wrong. This is where our Volunteer of the Month took the world of box top and Campbell's Soup labels by storm. Mrs. Beth Capps, today, the Board of Education is pleased to honor you for your dedicated service to our Broadneck Elementary students and school community. For years, the school's box top committee dutifully collected, clipped, and shipped those tags of commerce, but it wasn't until Beth brought the concept of competition box top collecting to the school community that Broadneck Elementary really began to benefit from the effort. Since 2010, Beth organizes grade-wide box top collection contests in which classes compete for prizes by bringing in the most Campbell box top labels and boxes. Tops and labels. Prizes and treats from pizza parties to classroom ant farms can be won. With each passing year, the intensity of this fundraising competition has grown, and so have the earnings for Broadneck Elementary PTO. To date, thanks to Beth's creative efforts, this campaign has brought in over twelve thousand dollars. But Beth didn't stop raising funds there. She arranged for her committee to successfully take advantage of Giant Food and Safeway School fundraising programs with an additional eight thousand dollars raised. Apparently, Beth can't stand to let an event pass without taking part. She organizes games at the Spring Fair, generously donates dozens of home-baked goods for many events, and liven's up PTO meetings with fresh ideas and witty comments. PTO President Nicole Roberts wonders how Beth manages to do all of this, raise a family, and work full-time for the U.S. Census Bureau is beyond commendable. According to Ms. Roberts, Principal Allison Lee, and Classroom Teacher Pat Myers, Beth seizes every opportunity for Broadneck Elementary. They take her seriously when she jokes about stalking her neighbors' recycling bins at night to claim unclipped box tops and labels. Mrs. Beth Capps, would you please come forward? With great appreciation, I present this Volunteer of the Month certificate and bell to you.
Well, congratulations. And how did they get you here?
Uh, we were going to talk about traffic patterns at the school and dangerous drivers. I have an issue with dangerous drivers in my neighborhood.
Oh, alright. Well, I used to be Assistant Principal at Broadneck, so I'm well aware of that. Yeah, that was a while back.
We have a lot more kids now.
I know.
It's bigger, too.
Well, congratulations. I'd like to present you with this Volunteer of the Month and this bell. And who do you have here? Who came to with you?
My husband, John. That's it. Well, and Nicole, and our Vice Principal, Mr. Quince.
Oh, good. Well, I want to thank you so much, and we really appreciate it. And there's your bell.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is School and Community Highlights. Ms. Korbelak.
Last night, I had the opportunity to go see a performance over at Annapolis High School called Twenty-One. It's a multidisciplinary arts production that was created by the PVA students, the second-year PVA students, and it was just a wonderful opportunity to see the progress that they have made over the past nine months.
It doesn't look like there are any other School and Community highlights, probably because we've all started to be very busy going to graduations. So we have been to many graduations, and it's been wonderful, and I think I can speak for all of us when I say they're going beautifully. And that means you, Mrs. Stratton. Yes, beautifully. So, alright, moving right along. Next on the agenda is PyAC, the PyAC Report.
Good morning, Ms. Burge, Ms. Ritchie, Superintendent Perkins, and the rest of the school board. For the record, my name is Carol Streeter, and I'm co-chair of the Parent Involvement Advisory Committee Council. Parent involvement is so important to Anarundel County, and we really, really appreciate the importance that you place on it and the opportunity that you give us to get together so that we can share ideas. This past year, not only did we share ideas amongst ourselves, but the central office takes the time to educate us on information that we think is important for us to get back into the community, and we really, really value that. It's amazing what happens behind the scenes. You know, us as parents, we just think things happen. A lot of work goes behind it, and it's nice for us to get educated. Some of the topics that we talked about this year that the central office educated us on were common core. Obviously, that's, we're going to continue on the education on that next year. School funding, which I found quite eye-opening. The online tools that not only us as parents can use, and how we can better educate the other parents in the community to use, but some of the back-office stuff that you use so that we can understand how it happens. And then school counseling. Obviously, with bullying and all of the cyber things taking place, we thought that was important. But the item that we talked about on the counseling side was how can we help our middle schoolers become high schoolers? Because there's a big jump there, and how do we help our elementary kids become middle schoolers? There's a lot of things within the schools that are happening. If we can help educate our parents, that'll take us the next step. In addition, PyAC does have an individual, which is me, on the School Start Time Committee, and we're working very diligently so that we can get a recommendation to you by the end of the summer so that you can see what the options are. We're very excited about the accomplishments we made last year. I know that we've shared a lot of ideas with each other, and you've made my job this summer a lot easier because this summer I was going to take some of these ideas back to principals within the Arundel Cluster, and two of them are here now, so now when I make that phone call, they're not going to be shocked at what happens. But thank you for your continued support with parent involvement. We, as parents, value our children's education and the opportunity to be involved. Thank you for the time today.
Thank you very much. We're now going to move to the Administrative Personnel Appointments. Mrs. Perkins, your recommendation, please. Four point oh one.
I recommend that the personnel listed on the attachment...
Be appointed and promoted.
Promoted.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes eight zero zero. I want to comment that in addition to the many principals, the appointments just approved by the board include the new Executive Director of Equity and Accelerated Student Achievement, Mr. Anthony Alston. Anthony, who is cur- Anthony, who is currently Senior Manager of Research and has been a principal, assistant principal, and special educator in our school system, is here this morning, and I'd like to invite him forward to say a few words.
Good morning, President Burge, Vice President Ritchie, members of the board, and Mrs. Perkins. I first want to thank you for the confidence you have shown in me with this appointment. I also want to thank all of those who have been involved in the work to close the gaps in our school system over the years. Their work has moved our school system forward and created more opportunities for our children. As has been said many times, the pace at which we have eliminated gaps has not been what everyone would like. You have changed, you have charged me and the members of the office that will be put in place in the upcoming weeks with being an integral part of accelerating that pace. I am very excited for this opportunity and believe my experience as a special educator, teacher specialist for discipline, assistant principal, principal, my work on the Eliminating the Achievement Gap Committee, and my most recent duties as Senior Manager of Research have prepared me well for this task. You need to know that this is not something that I take lightly. It is very personal. I have two sons in elementary school in our county, and I want for them what I want for every child: equitable opportunities to grow their talents, realize their potential, and excel in whatever field they choose in years to come. Let's be honest. We, like many other school systems, simply have not done enough to make this happen. It's not that we haven't worked hard, because we have, but the results aren't what we'd like for them to be, at least not yet. Everyone should know that the focus of this office's work will not change. I am looking forward to strengthening the office's relationships with curriculum and instruction, advanced studies and programs, school performance, student services, and professional development as we move forward, because those interactions will be crucial for our success. I'm also looking forward to working with the OCR Advisory Committee, faith-based organizations, and other community stakeholders. Eliminating the gap is not a task our school system can accomplish alone. We will continue to build partnerships and have courageous conversations with our various communities. They are absolutely critical for our children. Discussions of the gap almost always take place among adults, and today is no exception. It is critically important to remember, however, that when we talk about those gaps, we're actually talking about children. All of our children, mine included. They are depending on us to give them the very best education every single day. At the very least, we owe them that. Together, I believe that we will create the future for all of our children that we have talked about for far too long. This work is not easy. It won't happen overnight, but I am very eager to move forward in the next level. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alston. Moving on to item four point, four point oh two Personnel. Your recommendation, please.
I recommend that the board approve the actions as stipulated on the attached sheets.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Ms. Burge. You know, a colleague of mine once said that sometimes you, let's see, to do honor to the courage of the people who came before us, sometimes you have to make a powerful statement to the community. I think this is a powerful statement to the community. We've received a lot of input. We've received letters of votes of no confidence from the NAACP. We've received resolutions from the County Council about the achievement gap and not closing it fast enough. I've been on this board four years, and my colleagues are probably tired of hearing me say that we're moving at a glacial pace. We can do more. We can do better. We can do it quicker. We're in a big institution. I understand bureaucracies. I understand the fact that most bureaucracies are somewhat parochial in their view on things. But I think what Mamie has done has been absolutely spectacular. We charged her with this when she came in. Before Dr. Maxwell left, that's when we got the last letter of vote of no confidence. So I have pressed very hard for us to do things differently, do things better. I welcome the opportunity that we are going to give to our new Executive Director to try to do some things differently, to look at things outside of the boundaries of Anarundel County, to see what has worked, and see if they can be implemented here to achieve what we're trying to achieve. I've seen a lot of programs nationwide in my travels that have achieved more results than what we've achieved to date here. And again, Mamie, I think you've done a fantastic job. Quite frankly, I was out of town last week, and I received a lot of emails from people who represented the community, quote-unquote. And there were a lot of vitriolic comments, and quite frankly, I found it hard to understand because it was just, no more than a week or two ago, I was at an awards ceremony where Ms. Perkins received a number of accolades and awards, and some of those same people, all of a sudden, had changed their tone. You know, a hundred-eighty-degree change. I was kind of flabbergasted by that. I was also flabbergasted by the fact that rather than having some civil discourse on this, this is, you know, this was thrown into the press, into the limelight of the press. And there was a lot of misquotes, too. I look back at articles going back to 2002. Dr. Smith dealt with this issue. He promised to close the achievement gap, and certainly at the time, he even offered up his twenty thousand dollar bonus if he- up his $20,000 bonus if he didn't get it done. I don't think he got it done. Dr. Maxwell did a number of things. 2007, that quote came from Eugene Peterson about making bold moves. 2010, I saw articles where President NAACP said we were moving too slow. We had to do something, and on and on and on through the years. So now we're doing something. What I would ask now, because understand that we have the children for approximately 15% of the time in any given year, 15%. We can't work miracles with just 15% of their time. We need, as our head of HACA said at the December 16th County Council meeting, it's a three-legged stool. We need the community. We need the families. It's not just the school system. We're doing what we can. We're putting together the programs. We're making the offerings. What I would like to hear more often, rather than the criticisms, is four words: How can we help? How can we help? Quite frankly, since this all transpired last week and I saw the articles, I've been asking parents that I run into, I've been asking folks in the classrooms, community ambassadors and the like, what do you think of the potential for this reorganization? And the feedback has been either neutral or positive, not negative. So again, I think maybe we need to really sit down, and I'd be happy to talk with anybody. I haven't heard from anybody except in CCs on emails, excuse me, but I'd be happy to talk with anybody about this topic. I mean, here I sit, you know, I've been in the wars, too, quite frankly, for quite some time. You know, I've dealt with this in public schools, in my, in where I grew up. I've dealt with it in the military. I've dealt with it in Baltimore City. So I understand, but I do also understand that as a school system, there are a lot of things being done, and we need your help more than we need the constant criticism. And also, let's talk. I mean, we don't always have to... You have the hammer of this OCR document, and time and time again, I see how we've been hammered with this as a school system. Well, just because you have a hammer doesn't mean everything is a nail. And we're at a point now where we have, in my mind, responded as best we can to the issues, to the complaints, with the resources we have available. We ask that you help us along the way. We've gone as far as we can with what we've done in the past, and it just makes no sense to me that we continue to do what we did in the past and expect any different result. It's time that we try some new things. It's time that we get some people in here with maybe different skill sets to see if we can move this thing along, move it forward. And I would ask that you all just give it time. Give it time. I'd be happy to communicate with you, happy to talk with you as we go through this process. If things don't work in certain ways, we can always look to tweak it, but we can't continue to do what we've done and expect any different result than we've had to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. We have a motion on the floor that's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight, zero, zero. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's contract. Ms. Brandenburg.
A little excited, I'm sorry.
Ziz, it's not mine. So you can all be satisfied to know that.
I move to adopt the contract between the Board of Education and Dr. George Arlato as the next superintendent of Anaroma County Public Schools.
All the... Is there any discussion?
He has work to do as the chief of staff.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight, zero, zero. I would like to invite Mr. Arlato to, Dr. Arlato, to come up forward, please, and the board to come up, and we will sign the contract. Before we take our break, I just want to thank all of our stakeholders who got us to this point. I know that Captain Chip Seymour and Lisa Shore are here. I'm not sure if any of our other stakeholders are here. If you're a stakeholder in the audience, please stand, and thank you for all of your help in getting us to this point. Thank you so much. Now, we're going to take a 15-minute break for pictures, so we'll see you back here at five after, five... Five of 11. I can't tell what time the clock says. There's a glare over there. Five up. Thank you.
We're now going to start public participation. Anyone wishing to speak on an item not on today's agenda may offer testimony during this public participation portion of the meeting. Speakers will be allotted three minutes each. Student-specific and personnel matters are confidential and cannot be discussed in this forum. For the record, please give your name before speaking and handouts should be given to the board assistant. I do notice that there are some cards here from people who want to speak today to talk about the restructuring in the Equity Office. That's perfectly fine, but please be reminded that your testimony must not include the discuss discussion of any specific personnel. I will call those who have completed cards first, group by subject matter. Others who wish to speak may then come forward. You may either stand at the podium or speak from the chairs, whichever you prefer. We have one item for dress code, and that's Ms. Cora Sunagui and Alyssa Clark.
Hi, good morning. My name is Cora Sunagui.
And I'm Alyssa Clark.
We are eighth graders from Severn River Middle School today. We are going to bring to your attention the outdated student dress code within the handbook. We feel that the dress code is strongly focused on women. A rule telling us that bra straps cannot be showing is directly targeting girls. I went to middle school, or when I first went to middle school, around the second week, I was told that my shorts were too short. And that I was breaking the dress code. I had never sexualized myself before that day, and having a teacher publicly shame me in front of my new peers was devastating.
Some remarks from discussion of the dress code included modest is hottest and boys will be boys. Let's start with the phrase modest is hottest, shall we? Modest means having or showing a moderate estimation of one's own talents, abilities, and value. If modest is hottest, then that's not very modest. This deals with socialization, the norms of our society, what it values, how we act. And education is the main vehicle of promoting socialization. If we go into school learning that you need to hide your body so the boys have a distraction-free environment, that is unacceptable. Instead of teaching boys at a critical age to treat women's bodies with respect, they choose to eliminate the so-called distraction and place the blame on the girls.
When you use the excuse, boys will be boys, you are not only excusing it, you are condoning it and allowing boys to get away with their disgusting actions.
Yesterday, I was sent home from school because my shoulders were showing. They told me I was immodest. In the student handbook, it says that that you cannot show bare skin between the upper chest and mid-thigh, but nothing about shoulders, and that was what I was sent home for. To tell me that hiding my body is more important than my education is outrageous. They said dressing that the way that I was was creating a distraction for boys in our school. Are my bra straps or shoulders lowering people's test scores?
The way the dress code was written and is enforced promotes rape culture. Rape culture is a concept which links rape and sexual violence to the culture of society in which prevalent attitudes and practices normalize, excuse, tolerate, and condones rape. If we are to condone rape, condone it in school, then boys learn to think it is okay. They will go out into the world and continue this behavior. If you say that you are not promoting rape culture, then you are not seeing the whole picture.
I feel like people like the board with the student handbook and the dress code is sending the wrong message to young girls who are already struggling with self-confidence. You are establishing a sense of shame in these young, developing minds and bodies. School is where you get your knowledge, and you share your knowledge outside of school as well. If you are giving us this message inside of school, then we are going to struggle with it outside of school. Like when I'm at the mall and I'm wearing what I feel like I'm wearing, I find myself pulling down my shorts and feeling incompetent because I'm used to it at school. Okay. A human has the right to wear whatever they feel comfortable in. A human's first clothing was skin. Society has evolved to something more than this.
I think that for shorts, I don't understand why that is not okay because no matter the length, the skin on your knees is the same skin that's up here. And I don't understand why that would be considered immodest and a distraction to people. It says that you cannot show profanity, violence, and symbols of hate only for health, safety, and religious reasons. I don't think that your shoulder showing or bra strap or too short of shorts is a safety or health hazard to anyone.
I know there was a girl at our school who was sent home or had to change because she had a shirt that says, "I like girls." And she was told to change out of it. I don't see what's wrong with that. She has the right to have her own sexual preference or anything like that. I mean, I think that's a little bit ridiculous.
If she was wearing a shirt that said, "I like boys," I don't think she would have been sent home or told to change.
And then... Alright, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
It's Pelham here. There she is. Ladies, would you stop for a second before you leave? And I'm going to send Mrs. Pelham out to talk with you about the student advisory. And perhaps there's a place for you to state your concerns there and actually get some feedback so that we can find out exactly what we're dealing with, okay? I'd appreciate that. You'll see, Ms. Pelham, she's right there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to invite up Colin Murphy, Ricky Patton, and Matt Dove.
Alright, so I guess I'll start. This is about the cell phone tower construction on school property. So, a lot of the rhetoric has been given about how this is a revenue stream. So, I'm going to talk about something that should interest the board, which is math. The revenue stream proposed is $12,000. That revenue stream, though, doesn't exist in a vacuum, right? So, that revenue stream will affect other revenue streams. There have been multiple proposals now in Montgomery County showing property value decreases anywhere from 2% to 20%. So, let's say 20% is ridiculous. Let's use the low end, 2%. Property value, if it were to lose 2% on the 270 surrounding homes, which is Twin Harbors, Divinity Cove, Campus Green, those are the immediate areas impacted by the cell tower. tower. 2 percent would lose 2 percent of property taxes. 2 percent of property taxes on those homes using the median figures, not waterfront homes, non-waterfront homes, would equate to about $27,000 lost per year of property taxes, more than double the revenue stream. Beyond that, looking at this being one of public space, they're not paying property taxes themselves. Beyond that, the individuals that are using that space, that are losing their property tax value, I mean, the property value, are gonna lose actual real money, right? That you're losing value off of your house. So the math is completely deficient, right? So the revenue streams cannot be looked at as in a vacuum. Oh, we're adding 12 grand. You're losing, you're adding 12 grand, but you're losing potentially $27,000 using the low-end estimate of median non-waterfront homes, of which there are many in that area. So, the $27,000 figure realistically can be significantly higher. Those components, I think, need to be addressed and need to be thought of when you think, look at the $12,000. I think other people have thought about it. Anarond County College was offered this deal, and they turned it down because they didn't think the revenue stream was worth significant or the potential negative impacts to their property or their school or their environment, the aesthetic quality of the environment that their students are living in, that they're commuting to, that they're learning in, and trying to draw students to come into an environment that is aesthetically deficient now. So, all of those things go into pick $12,000 to think about it. Our wonderful volunteer that we just mentioned here earlier in the meeting raised more money than that revenue stream with box tops, right? Her revenue stream that she brought into the school was more significant than what the revenue stream from that cell tower is gonna generate by their numbers.
And I didn't catch your name. Could you please?
I'm sorry, my name is Matt Dove.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board, for letting us speak today. My name's Colin Murphy, and again, I'd also like to address the proposed cell tower at the Severn River and Magathie River Middle Schools. Last week, last Wednesday, there was a community meeting that was held at the Broadneck Library, of which probably about 50 to 60 members of the local community attended, and the overwhelming response was negative in that they did not support the construction of a cell tower on that site. That's just in general, since I'm not sure if you were aware of the meeting or heard any feedback about the meeting. What I would like to discuss, in addition to the loss of revenue from the tax aspect, is the safety issue, not the health concerns that everybody, you know, is always big up in arms about, but more along the lines of the actual facility, because the projected estimate is to have five carriers, which will each have to have their own generator on-site for backup generation, which is gonna have diesel fuel and batteries with sulfuric acid. Montgomery County actually has all cellphone towers listed as hazmat sites. So, in essence, we are putting a hazmat site on school grounds. So, all the potential impacts that could come of that, any kind of issue with any leakage, any spillage, and not only the safety concerns from the materials aspect, but of course, the children, putting something like that are going to, in turn, try to climb it, try to get onto it. So, potential dangers, lawsuits from children attempting to climb, getting hurt from that, as well as with potentially five cellphone carriers having support staff coming in and out, they are gonna be offered 24/7 access in our environment of continued school security and keeping an eye on whoever comes into the grounds. What plans are there to have background checks, vetting, especially during school hours? Will they be checked in? And will they have escorts to do any kind of maintenance on the grounds, which that never got any kind of address about that as to whether or not we will be having any kind of security procedures for those people that will be coming and having 24-hour access to the site. And again, potentially, it'll start with one company, but up to five, so all of them will have their own staff that have, will have access to it in regards to that. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Ricky Patton, and I represent the same neighborhood, Divinity Cove. Also, I had two children that went to Severn River and Magathie. They graduated from Broadneck High School and went on to college. I would like to express my concern, particularly for the children, because these are little children that already have other challenges. They have the open classroom, their schedule, I think that's the worst scheduling they have in the county, and they have a lot of hormonal changes too that they're going through. I'm just afraid putting the cell tower back at their school will add another challenge to these children. I'm afraid they will climb on it. Also, the neighborhood's kids that's already using it, the fields that they're using for sport, and when I walk my dog in that area, I see when they have basketball tournament, the kids are out playing on the areas, and I'm afraid these children will climb the tower because you can't really see the tower from the back. It's going to be hidden in the back from the school. Another one concern I have is that American pediatric actually recommended to take the baby monitor out of the baby's room last month because of the radiation. They knew it was not going to happen, so they said, "At least take it out of the baby's crib and put it as far away from the baby as possible." But it's just a concern I will have for these children too, that's going to play out on these fields doing sports and PE around that tower because it is going to be around that tower. Thank you, think of the children.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm now going to call the next groups up by about five. I am gonna call up Reverend Stephen Tillot first because he needs to go to an appointment very quickly, and following that will be Carl Snowden, Dr. Jerry Alston-Megget, Bishop Craig Coats, and Grafton Johnson.
Let's pull this out so it can help me keep time. Good morning, I'm Stephen Tillot, pastor of Asbury-Broadneck United Methodist Church, president of the Annapolis Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance. I served as one of the original community members of the OCR Advisory Committee and recently served on the Community Stakeholders Panel that interviewed the finalists for the superintendent position, and am the father of a 2005 Broadneck High School graduate. Not in my remarks, but just to observe, we understand what happened this morning, and if this body is aware that there is a matter of great concern to the community, to hide things in personnel actions and speed them through when you know that there's response to come from the community first is bad form. I'm here this morning to express my deep-seated opposition to the proposed restructuring of the Office of Equity Assurance. When we met with the three finalists on March 29th, it was my sense that one of the reasons Dr. Allato struck a positive chord with the panel is that he essentially said things instituted during Dr. Maxwell's tenure were going well, and that no wholesale changes were necessary, only some tweaking here and there. Imagine my surprise when the word of the reorganization, or what we in the community are calling the dissolution of the Office of Equity Relations, became public. The changes Mrs. Perkins is seeking to implement on Dr. Allato's behalf are both poorly timed and badly aimed. Has the process of changing the culture within Anarond County Public Schools been easy? Of course not. Transforming a school system with a long history of racism takes time and hard work, and there will be bumps along the way to build a culturally proficient and culturally sensitive environment in all 122 schools in the county. Of hard work and of change, Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Change does not roll in on the wheels of inevitability, but comes through conscientious struggle, continuous struggle." Of progress, he said, "Progress is neither automatic nor inevitable. Every step toward the goal of justice requires sacrifice, suffering, and struggle, the tireless exertions and passionate concerns of dedicated individuals." The changes that we seek, know that we demand and insist upon, will not come easily, but only through the continuous struggle, sacrifice, tireless exertion, and passionate dedication. I and all of the congregations and members I represent appreciate the necessary creative tension brought about during the last seven years of the Equity Assurance Office work, and we believe that more of the same will be essential to finally and completely closing the achievement gap. I conclude with an illustration. I've seen it written and heard the question over and over again, "When will they be satisfied? When will enough be enough?" I'm so glad you asked. I ask you to consider a race taking place on a football field. Every five yards of the field is marked off to indicate the distance one has traveled down the field. Let's say that every 10 yards represents a century, 100 years. For the first two centuries of our presence on these shores, descendants of Africa were chained to the starting line.
Your three minutes are up.
Will somebody yield me their three minutes, please?
No, that's not how we do things, sir.
He says I can have it.
Sir, 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 that's not how we do things. Your three minutes are up. We have a whole list of people to speak. We have three minutes per person. Sir, no, he cannot, you have your three minutes. He has had his three minutes. These are the rules for all people who speak. What? There were two of them. They had six minutes for the two of them.
So if he stands next to me, we get three more minutes? Is that basically how we have to play this? I'm just asking. Come stand next to me, please.
Sir. Fine, the two of you may speak for six minutes.
I will conclude with an illustration. I've seen it written and heard the question over and over again, "When will they be satisfied? When will enough be enough?" Well, think of a football field. Every five yards is marked off to indicate the distance one has traveled down the field. Let's say that every 10 yards represents a century, 100 years. For the first two centuries of our presence on these shores, descendants of Africa were chained to the starting line, while other occupants of the nation we helped build were running freely down the field. By the time the chains came off, we were already 30 yards behind. We spent the next century running with a refrigerator strapped to our backs called Jim Crow, and now only over the last 50 to 60 years have we been kind of free to run. Now, I ask you, is it reasonable to expect that the runner chained to the starting line for the first 30 yards of the race will have caught up to the other runners by the 40-yard line? Of course not. You and I all know that is ridiculous. Well, it's no more ridiculous than expecting African-American students to close a 23% gap in math and a 19% gap in reading in the first eight years of the OCR agreement. It's no more ridiculous than expecting our students to soar and flourish in a system that suspends students who are about 21% of the student population at a rate of 44%, disproportionately double their numbers in the schools. It is no more ridiculous than throwing out the baby with the bathwater and dismantling an office and the staff that has earned the trust of the community, all in the interest of a fresh new approach. And it is no more ridiculous than to expect those runners who started off centuries behind and yards after the fact to keep making steady progress with the staff that has supported them torn asunder and brand-new Common Core standards breathing down their necks. I implore the board to stop this poorly timed reorganization before it starts, and you still can, and let us all get back to the business of growing and educating our children and our communities. This job is not just the job of the Equity Assurance Office because, in fact, they work under and for the superintendent, need to continue to be a part of the superintendent's executive team and together, working with them and with the community to make that happen. Finally, I just say our children's future is not negotiable. It never was, and it never will be. I thank you for your time.
I know I have a little bit of time left. My name is Grafton Johnson.
And you have about 30 seconds.
And I can do it in 30 seconds. I have no confidence in this board. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Greetings, President Burge, Vice President Ritchie, Interim Superintendent Perkins, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Dr. Jerry Alston-Megget. I am the first Vice President of the North Anarond County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. This chapter provides support to over 100 children in our public school systems through our academies and our mentoring programs. During last month's board meeting, while accepting a plaque recognizing her support to the students of Anarond County, Dr. Carol Parham conveyed that she wanted the plaque to serve as a reminder of the work that has been done in the past and encourage resolve for the work that needs to be done in the future. Other testimony has been given, asking the board to demonstrate the wisdom and courage necessary to support the Office of Civil Rights Agreement. On April 21st, 2014, County Councilman Daryl Jones shared the results of a study which indicates that it is Anarond County's economic best interest to close and eliminate the achievement gap. The adoption of Resolution 13-14 elevates the visibility of the county's achievement gap. It is critical that this board provide the leadership the governor has charged you with to produce the win-win our county needs and deserves with deliberate speed. The Anarond County Board of Education Handbook adopted June 15th, 2011 identifies eight key areas under the key work of school boards. The vision key area indicates a commitment to establishing a clear vision of student achievement as the top priority for the board, staff, and community. Therefore, the community hereby requests that this board share our vision of student achievement, work diligently to eliminate the achievement gap, and support the yeoman's work currently being done in the Office of Equity and Human Relations. We know from experience that the county public schools usually characterize its observations as criticisms. We want to be clear, we are not criticizing. We are simply saying that the Office of Human Relations was, has undertaken without the change of restructuring, the Office of Equity and Human Relations has been undertaken without a comprehensive plan. That is an observation, not a criticism. Noting that the school system chose not to allow any public discussion of this restructuring is an observation, not a criticism. Conveying that having the Office of Equity and Human Relations report to the deputy superintendent lessens its visibility is an observation, not a criticism. Furthermore, appropriate representation and consideration of the needs of African-American students within the Office of Equity and Human Relations is our most paramount observation. We must consider the children. We must. There is no other way to ensure the success of Anarond County's future business and community leaders. Ten years has not been enough to eradicate the gap, which speaks to the vastness of the problem. Thank you for allowing me to give the statement.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Bishop Craig Coats, and normally pastors need more than three minutes, but I'll prove that theory wrong. I'm a lifetime resident of this county, pastor for 21 years here, and a longtime advocate for African-American student achievement in the public and private sector. In 1999, I founded the Rapture Learning Institute for Excellence, a private school of which the late Dr. Maya Angelo was an investor in the public, in the launching, it became a launching pad for over 200 kids in our county, of which 56 of them had fallen through the cracks of the Anarond County Public School System. I'm proud to say today that 53 of those 56 have either graduated high school and college or have graduated high school or in college and are contributors to our society. Ten years ago, we stood as a community on the steps of the Wally Bates Center to declare our commitment to hold the Anarond County school system, as well as ourselves, accountable to close the achievement gap and eliminate the disparity in the number of African-American children being expelled, suspended, and reprimanded versus their peers. And with the assistance of the OCR as a mediator, the creation of this document, the journey began. Today, I stand, along with many representatives of that same community, to say that we declare our intention to continue to hold ourselves and the school system accountable to together finish what we have started. We applaud your efforts today to want to accelerate this process, and I'm very confident that Mr. Alston will do a great job, and he is competent to do such. However, the manner in which this was done, in my opinion, is a potential breach of this agreement. Where are the statistics? Where is the plan? Why hasn't the community been involved in any discussions to restructure? I want to finally say this, that our children's future is not an option to be negotiated amongst a few people. It requires investment of all parties, including It requires the investment of all parties, including the discussions to restructure or alter any current agreements. Thank you.
Madam President, some people watch clocks. I watch people. And I want to let you know that the process that I understood to be undertaken was first sign up, first speak. I don't think that's the process that occurred this morning. And if you were going to change the process, because you knew that there were more people speaking on this subject, I think you should have just informed the community as a whole.
I always announce in the beginning that I'm grouping them by subjects.
That's fine.
And I always announce that at the beginning of every meeting.
Yeah, I think many of us were in the impression, first come, first served. And so people arrived earlier and had signed up. But I don't want to get off into that. I just wanted to make that observation to you, just for the future. It would be helpful.
Oh, well, sir, I do announce that at every single meeting that I group the things by topic.
Let me begin my comments, because I just want to go into it. First, my comments is not directed at the current interim superintendent. It's directed at the incoming superintendent, Dr. Alato. Partnership is important. All of us know that we cannot close the achievement gap unless there is a partnership. Partnership implies by definition that we work together. The fact of the matter is that this is a major restructuring. The public should have had the right and opportunity to comment on it. It may very well been that we all wound up on the same place, but no public input, no opportunity for the public to know how this impacts. Now, there's a fundamental question that must be asked, and that is this. How does this fit into a comprehensive plan? The county council unanimously passed and requested a comprehensive plan. I think everyone here, including members of the board, would agree that we ought to have a comprehensive plan. But what is the plan? How do you put together restructuring without knowing what the plan is? And Dr. Alato, as you come in, it's important that you understand that you have, as you've been nominated and selected to be the superintendent, there is high expectation. And expectation is that we work together as a community, that we work together to address this issue. There's been a serious breach, make no doubt about it, a serious breach in terms of the relationship. It would have done no one any harm to have pulled together your OCR advisory committee, read your agreement. It says you're supposed to work with the OCR committee. Why didn't anybody think to sit down with the OCR committee, say, here's what we're planning? What do you think? What is your ideas? What is your input? Partnership. Partnership requires that people have an opportunity to have input. It's going to take a minute. And what I would start-
You can take about fifteen seconds.
I'm going to take a minute. What I would strongly recommend-
Sir, sir, this is-
Excuse me, let me just finish my comment, if I might. You allow other people to speak. I saw what occurred. Please let me finish my comment. It's going to take less than a minute. So please let me finish. What I would recommend for the board is two things, seriously recommend to them. One is that the board do hold a public hearing to allow people to have an opportunity to have input in this process. The second thing I would recommend strongly to this board, whatever it decides to do with the restructuring, that the board allows the superintendent office to be the office that supervise this very, very important position. With that, I thank you and reiterate what others have said. Our children's future is not negotiable. Thank you.
Ms. Trifania A. Ellis Johnson, Mr. Eugene Peterson, Ms. Wanda Stansbury, Ms. Alva Shepherd Johnson, and Bishop Larry Lee Thomas.
Good morning. My name is Trifania Ellis Johnson. I am a resident of Severn, Maryland, and I am privileged to have had two daughters to have graduated from the Anarundel County Public School System. And there are now, one is graduated from college and one is in college. However, I've left behind a number of students that I still care about. And this morning, I just would like to say, we have come to the Board of Education today to cash a check, similar to what Dr. Martin Luther King said in his "I Have a Dream" speech, when the architects of the school system and the NAACP wrote these magnificent words. We were signing a promissory note, and it's obvious today that the note has defaulted. And we are concerned, and we feel as though we have received a bad check marked insufficient funds, and we ask that you review these, and we ask that you remember the words in these. So today, I just wanted to say, just review this and remember the words that were originally written in the agreement. And for those reasons, I just want to say thank you, and I have not used the full three minutes that I have been allotted. So I do hope that you pass along the minutes that I did not use to someone else, so they can feel free to use them. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Interim Superintendent, President Burge, Vice President Ritchie, and other members of the school board. This is a sad day that I come here today. I've had conversations with some of you. I have been very blunt about my opinions, because I never shy away from that. And I am here today to say that I am in total opposition to what's going on. I believe it disrespects the community, African-American and otherwise. It rejects the public participation ethic of public school boards by not holding a public hearing to allow for individuals to talk freely about this major change. And it does a disservice to the incoming superintendent and to the person charged with running this office, because they come with zero confidence in the community behind them. That is the impact of this rather hastily done decision. As I told many of you, this would add wide reverberations throughout the community. And you can see that by the members of the community that are here. Are there many parents here? Of course not, because the parents that we come to represent many times are too busy just going from day to day and hour to hour. They don't have the time. It's us who have to fill in the gap. And the old Office of Equity and Human Relations did a marvelous job of that. As former school board members, when they called me, said, and I'll be blunt, what the hell is going on? And I did not have an answer for them. I believe that this decision was ill-conceived. There were recommendations that could have been made, but Dr. Alato was the person who should have taken responsibility for this decision. It's his ship. He needs to stand up and be accountable. And I believe that's what the community will hold him to and hold all of you to. So I would like to end by saying optics are important, and this may be a little controversial. But when this is done in the Carol Sheffy Parham Building, and it's done with the composition of this board, people in the community believe that you're hiding behind step-and-fetch-it and Aunt Jemima. That's how they see it. And it's unfortunate that I have to use that kind of language, but you have to call it as you see it.
You know, Mr. Peterson, if you're going to be offensive, could you please sit down? I won't stand for that.
Good morning to the board and to Superintendent Perkins. I'm Alva Shepherd Johnson, a member of this community and a former educator, teacher, and counselor for Anarundel County. And I was a member of the committee who wrote this agreement that the board agreed to. I'd like to voice my opposition to the changes that you have made. It shows a lack of good faith, shows a breach of contract, and you have not given the public the opportunity to participate in this, and you do not have a comprehensive plan. I'd like to formally protest what you are doing. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
In my position, as I stand, I was sitting there, it's prayer time.
Could you give me your name, so I can make sure I have it on the record?
My name is Bishop Larry Lee Thomas. I pastor Empowering Believers Church in Glen Burnie, and also was a member, or am a member, of many of the clergy alliances here in the county, especially the United Black, former United Black clergy, who also signed on to this OCR agreement. I am a grandfather of children that are presently in school and also represent some of those parents and other congregational members that could not be here on this afternoon. But I come because I want to just make it short and brief, because a lot of my colleagues has already voiced and already said the things that are close to my heart about the no confidence, about having a greater partnership, by being more accountable, that we need a comprehensive plan, and our children's future is not negotiable. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Ritchie, I just want to-
You're Ms. Stansbury?
I am, I'm sorry. But I want to ask your indulgence to, I have my own group, and it was intended so that I could be efficient, and I have a statement, and three of us are going to break it up in three-minute increments to be efficient.
Who are those three?
Follow your rules. They are-
Dawn Alexander Powell.
Raleigh Turnage, and Irma Holland is going to stand with us as well. They've all signed in. So that's why I didn't come up sooner.
They have all three. I'm just going to-
I was calling people in order that they signed in. I understand.
As Mr. Snowden had requested. Is that all right?
That's fine. I had already put my group together, if you don't mind, for purposes of being efficient.
I thought this was a request to do things in order.
So when you call them, they will already have spoken, and you can move on to your next list.
We're going to just, three minutes is what you get. Apparently, I'm not running the meeting anymore.
Okay. Well, we're going to get started. Do you want to sit or stand? Doesn't matter. Okay. We're going to stay within your timeframe. I'm Wanda Stansbury. I'm here as a party to the Office for Civil Rights Memorandum of Agreement and a member of the OCR Advisory Committee to the Superintendent. And I'll let them introduce themselves, so that as we read our statement, they don't have to break in and say their names.
I'm Irma Holland.
I'm Dawn Alexander Powell, a parent, a treasure hunter, a community partner, member of a faith-based organization, and product of Anarundel County Schools.
I'm Raleigh Turnage, for Vice President of Anarundel County branch of NAACP, member of the Advisory Committee, and a parent.
Good morning again. Sixty years ago, on May seventeenth, nineteen fifty-four, thirteen Topeka, Kansas, parents and twenty schoolchildren had the courage to step up and challenge an educational system of blatant and deliberate racial segregation and inequality. The landmark U.S. Supreme Court decision in their lawsuit, Brown v. Board, struck down racial segregation in public schools as a way of reaching equality in education and closing the then-government-sanctioned educational divide between African-American and white students. This divide is ever-present today. In nineteen fifty-four, this Anarundel County School Board resisted the Brown v. Board decision and refused the court's instruction. In nineteen fifty-five, in response to Anarundel County and many other southern school districts' resistance, the high court revisited the Brown decision and ordered desegregation with all deliberate speed. That case, we call Brown II. Still, after little to no action in integrating our schools in nineteen fifty-six, the court, in a lesser-known decision, Cooper v. Aaron, affirmed its power to enforce federal civil rights laws and court decisions against states and local governments through financial sanctions and other civil charges. As we all know, money talks, and the removal of money talks even louder. If Brown was the foundation, Cooper v. Aaron was the muscle. Needless to say, Anarundel County begrudgingly integrated our schools. I begin with this backdrop to establish the foundation on which we all stand here today. A foundation which springs, from which springs our Local Office for Civil Rights Memorandum of Agreement, our OCR Advisory Committee to the Superintendent, our Office of Equity and Human Relations, and even more recently, our very own Anarundel County Resolution thirteen dash fourteen, introduced on May seventeenth, the sixtieth anniversary of Brown v. Board by Councilman Darryl Jones. This resolution attempts to bring some muscle to our OCR efforts. Fast forward six decades later, access to educational opportunities for and treatment of African-American children in our school system are still separate and still very unequal by the school system's own data, even though our schools are integrated. On May sixteenth, commemorating Brown v. Board's-
Can you please wrap up?
I have last sentence. Brown v. Board's anniversary. President Obama said that the hope and promise of Brown remains unfulfilled and that we must continue striving toward equal opportunities for all our children, from access to advanced classes to participation in the same extracurricular activities.
And so here we are. If I were to title the remaining or remainder of my comments, I would call it Shock and Aw, which I don't know if you remember, was the name of Defense Secretary Donald Rumsfeld's hapless, disastrous, and ill-fated airstrike campaign of dropping a thousand bombs a day for several days on Iraq in two thousand and three, which literally turned our stomachs and pained our souls at the thought of thousands of civilian women, children, and elderly reduced to what is called collateral damage. The actions taken by lame-duck interim superintendent to go out with a bang, as she has publicly stated, by dropping several bombs in our community over the last few days, not the least of which was the immediate striping or stripping of the Office of Equity and Human Relations on the final days of her one-year tenure, are reprehensible, repugnant, and lacking all professional decorum. Her immediate shutdown and banishment of a professional and committed staff that is vested deeply in our children and our community, and the dismissal of all the work and efforts of that office and other staff on behalf of our children is deplorable, odious, arrogant, not to mention a spit in the face to this community who she has ignored in this process. Further, we reject the watering down of a focus on African-American students and the motion of its deputy superintendent, the motion of it to the deputy superintendent Arlen Liverman, who has been begrudgingly supported all efforts towards closing the achievement gap. And we reject the rollback of hard-won measures and initiatives that have grown out of the foundation of Brown v. Board and its offsprings, our very own OCR agreement. Her actions, further, are a breach of an explicit and implied duty of diligence and good faith in the OCR agreement and a breach of the tenets of the agreement that we work collaboratively. This is too important an issue for an interim superintendent to spearhead and not to have public input. Additionally, the eager and public rubber-stamping of these actions by incoming Superintendent Mr. George Alato and County Executive Newman and the supports by the school board, if its chooses to accept Mrs. Perkins' proposal to throw out the baby with the bathwater and ignore this community, is cowardly. Your conclusion or collusion also dirties your hands in the slaughter of our children's hopes, dreams, and gifts and talents through denied educational opportunities and access and unfair and unjust treatment. The parents and other community members and groups represented in the OCR agreement reject and renounce Mrs. Perkins' actions and have elected a vote of no confidence in Deputy Superintendent Arlen Liverman, Interim Superintendent Perkins, incoming Superintendent Alato, each member of this board that votes in favor of Mrs. Perkins and Mr. Alato's subsequent actions on this matter and County Executive Newman.
In light of Mrs. Perkins and the board's breach of the OCR agreement and its parties to the OCR agreement, we demand, for the sake of decency and order, a public hearing of the board with community input and comments on the proposed changes prior to a vote that's already occurred, to include explanation and investigation of the recent actions, so prior to a vote, you can still fix it, that the Office of Equity and Human Relations, even under name change to Office of Equity and Accelerated Student Achievement, retain its mission, retain its staffing levels, and continue to build on the work and findings, and that the office remain aligned with and report to the Office of the Superintendent and not be demoted or placed under the Deputy Superintendent. I close by advising you that it is not too late to right this wrong and get on the right side of history, lest you resemble those that resisted Brown I and II or suffer the consequences of Cooper versus Aaron. And on a person, as a personal note, it amazes me how you can make a decision, because I'm a leader in this community, I'm a parent, I'm a mother, and when I make decisions, I listen to the backlash.
Hello. My name's Irma Holland. I am, as you'll find, one of the original signers of this agreement, you'll see my name, as signed on that agreement on the behalf of the community. As we negotiated the OCR agreement back some, quite some years ago, I remember such an incident as disoccurring not long before we started talking to then-Supervisor Smith, in which the community was talking with him about another issue, and Superintendent Smith made a decision right before a meeting with the community that we were to discuss, and the community, of course, was like this again. So I'm sad to know that things have not changed a whole lot in the way that decisions are made. Mr. Webb talked about a three-legged stool, and I'm afraid that the community sometimes feels like that, afraid to sit on that stool because it is not properly supported with the community, the superintendent, the school board, and the students working together. So when this kind of things happen, you can expect this kind of reaction, and I'm sorry that those who make the decisions aren't able to sit and hear the backlash or the problems caused by those decisions. I like to assume good intentions. I like to assume that you don't get up every morning coming to do this job and feel like that you're going to do the worst that you can for the community or for the students. So I want to assume good intentions. And I want to just say that there's many ways to lead, but when you have an autocratic leadership style that is seldom welcome and is mostly unwelcome and it never builds collaboration or community, and hopefully that's what you're hoping to build here. As leaders in the school system, we hope that you please consider the voice of this community, the terms that the community brought forth to you. I hope you were listening, I hope you consider it. And we hope, we understand, hope that you understand that when you're talking about a gap in the education of our students, you're not just talking about students, their academic standing, you're also talking about building, decreasing an economic, socioeconomic gap in the community also. So that is why this community seems to be a little bit up in arms today. I also like to say that, you talk about "we," I listened to you, Mr. Webb, and you talked about "we," I guess you mean the school board, and you talk about "you," and I suppose you mean the community, and "them." And hopefully, one day, you know, it'll all be looked at as one. We can't, we can't be the "we," "they," and "them" and get anything solved here. And you talked about the civil discourse, and that would have been nice, yes. That is exactly what was called for, and I'm glad that you recognized that. So I just encourage you now, although it did not take place at first, to consider...
Can you please wrap up?
...what the community has to say.
Can you wrap up?
Yes, I can. And I know Mr. Austin, and I'm just really hoping that, I wish he had been here, I don't see him here in the room, but I wish he had stayed around, sorry.
Back to work.
I wish he had been able to stay around to see maybe what he was set up for. That's a fine young man. Okay, but that's a fine young man, and I kind of feel like he's been set up for failure. He's been, the office has been demoted, it doesn't even report to the superintendent. I don't even know if he was aware of the community's support for this agreement. So don't set someone up for failure, knowing that this was not Mrs. Perkins' place to do this, and I doubt she did it all by herself. I doubt that this is what she wanted to leave here. This was a decision by more than her, and it's just that I hope that you listen to the community this time.
Okay, alright.
And remember that we all have to be a part of that whole body.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call up the next, the final four people on this topic. Mickey Emanuel, Jacqueline Alsop, Donna Alexander Powell, and Reverend Johnny Calhoun. And I also have a card from Wanda Nottingham. I'm not sure if it's on this topic or not, but...
I have a card too.
Oh.
Tanya Powell.
Oh, go ahead and come up then. I, it may have accidentally gotten stuck to another one, Ms. Powell, I'm very sorry. Oh, okay. I think it got pulled together with another group, I apologize for that. I'd prefer you go in the order that I called you, because that's the order you signed up in, except, I think, Ms. Powell, you may have been the, no, you weren't the first. Mr. Emanuel, you were the first.
Before I get started with my comments, Madam President, if I may confirm...
Can you speak into the microphone, sir? Because no one can.
Thank you. But before I get started with my comments, Madam President, if you could confirm, based on Mr. Snowden's comments, if groups testify, if you call them based on the size of the group, and the reason I ask is because the largest group here is to talk about the OCR agreement, and we're being called last.
Yes.
Last month, when I was here, the Bill Crofton High School Group went first, they were the largest group. I was only one person, the only person testifying in support of the OCR agreement last month, and I went last. I was very last. The Bill Crofton High School Group went first, so it looks like things change from meeting to meeting.
Did you come in after?
No, no, I was here.
No, okay.
No, I was here, and in fact, I left, whatever, I mean, I turned in my card. Here's the thing, it may not have been turned in to you at that point.
Right, it may have been that I got your card after.
Because I'm keeping time, I'm keeping time here, and it looks like from back here that people are being shorted on time, and I just want to make sure that I understand how this whole process is really working. So I would like to...
Oh, I think they're telling me that there were kids here with the Crofton Group. Sometimes when there's children at a nighttime group, we might take them sooner so they can get home. I'm not, I don't remember, and I don't remember that situation.
Okay.
It also could be that I had the cards up here and that your card came to me after, because sometimes I get cards later, and so then I put them in the back.
Got it, okay. So my time is starting now, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Greetings, President Burge, Vice President Ritchie, Deputy Superintendent Arlen Perkins. I'm sorry, Mr. Perkins, I'm sorry.
Liverman.
Liverman, Deputy Superintendent Liverman, I'm sorry. My apologies, sir. For the record, my name is Mickey Emanuel. I have three grandchildren in Anarundel County Public Schools. The last time I was in this room, there was a smart, strong, courageous black woman here, steadfast in the belief that no child should be allowed to fall through the cracks. She set a tremendous example of courageous leadership, and I was gratified to have been here to see Dr. Parham receive her plaque. I do want to congratulate Dr. Alato, Superintendent Designee Alato, for his selection, and also Mr. Anthony Alston. I will have a chance to share some thoughts, I'm sure, in the future about the commitment that I have personally spoken about for years, wanting Anarundel County Public Schools to be successful for all children. Obviously, it's already successful for some children, but I have said this in many occasions, including going back to May of 2009 at Anarundel Community College at the Education Forum, and I pledged my support to help the school system be successful, but I mentioned that I would not hesitate to oppose the school system when appropriate and when necessary. I congratulated Mr. Alston already, I went over and shook his hand a few minutes ago during the break, and I said the same thing to him. I want to be successful, he'll get the benefit of me not fighting with him the way I did until I learned the truth, and I fought for years, and I apologize to people in the past for me not having been informed on the issues. I used part of my time last month to suggest that we adopt a new norm in America, one in which criticism is only offered if necessary to convey a proposed solution. My experience at Anarundel County Public Schools is hypersensitive to criticism, so much so that it often confuses, it often confuses observations for criticism. I also use part of my time to acknowledge my respect for the hard work and commitment the vast majority of Anarundel County Public Schools employees demonstrate on a daily basis. In addition, I reiterated my hope that this board will demonstrate the wisdom and courage necessary to support the OCR agreement. In the May 28th, 2014 OEHR restructuring press release Superintendent Perkins indicated Anarundel County Public Schools must be brave enough to look inward first to make changes. I agree with that statement. However, African-American students need an inward look that looks all the way into the classroom where the achievement gap is perpetuated. Not criticism, just an observation. The press release also quoted interim superintendent saying the school system needed a fresh, new approach to the way our school system addresses issues. The relabelled OEHR will be reporting to the deputy superintendent. The deputy superintendent was in charge of the ETAG Steering Committee and later the Executive Oversight Committee. There is nothing new or fresh about the way this restructuring is being managed. Again, not a criticism, just an observation. If it is a fresh, new perspective, if, I'm sorry, if Dr. Alato, and then, so after you announce the restructuring, then you announce that there's going to be a blue-ribbon commission. So it seems like things got a little backwards there. In closing, I would like to ask, if ten years is not enough time to eliminate the achievement gap, how many more students affected by the achievement gap must graduate or drop out of Anarundel County Public Schools before the achievement gap is eliminated? Thank you.
Ms. Alsop?
Good morning, President Burge, Vice President Ritchie, and Deputy Superintendent Mr. Liverman, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Jacqueline Boone Alsop, and I'm the president of the Anarundel County Branch of the NAACP. As you have heard and will hear, there are ongoing issues related to the welfare of African-American students in this school system. Recent actions by the school system have caused further apprehension in the community. These issues are serious, that they have been drawing the attention of local as well as the state conference NAACP. Prior to determining a definitive course, we will be discussing these and other priority matters in depth at our meeting with the school system representatives at the meeting that has been scheduled for June 18th. Thank you.
Ms. Powell, actually, Ms. Tanya Powell, then Ms. Donna Powell.
Thank you. President Burge, Vice President Ritchie, Deputy Superintendent Liverman, and members of the Board of Education, good morning. My name is Tanya Jones Powell, and I'm a resident of Edgewater, Maryland, with two children who have matriculated in Anarundel County Public Schools. I have worked in my children's schools, serving as president of the Central Middle School PTSO, worked in the community, serving as the immediate past president of the North Rundle County Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and worked through Delta, Jack and Jill of America, Inc., and other organizations, providing mentoring, guidance, and programs in support of students and student achievement throughout this county for many years. Many in this room today have been working with our students to help them meet with success, and many of us have worked with the Office of Equity and Human Relations and its committed and dedicated personnel. We have worked in schools in South County, North, and West County. As a result, we are very familiar with the challenges facing our students, especially African-American students. I am speaking this morning to register my grave disappointment with the recent announcement that the Office of Equity and Human Relations will be reorganized and that the personnel in that office will have their positions eliminated. This decision is short-sighted. This office has done tremendous work over the years in conjunction with the community and other stakeholders to work to eliminate the achievement gap and promote all students' success. The gap is closing, but it is not closed, and we have much work to do. But no one person or small group can remedy the situation that has existed in this county for many years. We ask that you consider the following work done by that office. It worked with the Office of Professional Development to conduct ongoing cultural professional development for central office, school administrators, and in schools. It researched and influenced the inclusion of the concept of culturally relevant instruction. It brought the nationally-recognized Kids at Hope to the community to train adults in schools and communities to demonstrate that all children can succeed, no exceptions. Kids at Hope is now in eighteen schools in this county. It was a forerunner in addressing disproportionate discipline as it affects African-American students by conducting a system-wide audit of student discipline referrals in 2011, resulting in a teacher training, revisions to the referral process, and input into changing the no-tolerance policies and practices to be more supportive to students. It introduced the school system to research on the school-to-prison pipeline, restorative practices, how to improve achievement for minority boys, and used the national recommendations to reduce suspensions, especially for nonviolent offenses, for input into the state and local policies on discipline. It conducted the only community forums two times a year, creating a transparent process to keep the community informed of the progress and challenges in addressing achievement gaps in student discipline. I have participated in these forums in South County, North County, and here at the Board of Education. It recruited, galvanized, and promoted, supported wide variety of community organizations, including fraternities, sororities, churches, and civic groups to get more involved in mentoring, tutoring, providing scholarships, to advocate for students, testified at the Board of Education, and other initiatives to support student achievement. It helped numerous parents, particularly African-American students, to understand how to navigate the process for discipline. In closing, the work of the Office of Equity and Human Relations is not finished. Reorganization is not needed. Please provide the community with data showing why this drastic measure was done, why the community was not consulted in this process for input, as called for under the memorandum understanding that was negotiated by the Justice Department more than ten years ago. We encourage all of you to do the right thing for all of our students and not simply to engage in a restructuring and cause change for change's sake. Reinstate those who are working diligently to help our students and work, provide the needed funding and other resources to achieve equity and success for all of our students in this county. Thank you. And I have a presentation with supporting documents that I'm submitting to you, and I please encourage you to review it.
Okay, can you hand it to our board assistant, please? Ms. Donna Powell? Oh, okay, that's what happened, she pulled the wrong Ms. Powell car.
I pulled the wrong, I just saw Powell and I...
Excellent. All right. Mr. Reverend Calhoun, I'm so sorry.
Bless you. To President Burge, to our acting superintendent in absentia, to our superintendent designee, Dr. Alato, to our deputy superintendent to the board and all assembled, my name is Reverend Johnny Calhoun, and I'm just glad to be here today. Somebody say amen. You know, the level of tension, the level of non-collaborative spirit, it really doesn't speak well on us trying to work together to close a gap and working together as a team. And so I just wanted to say, as a clergy person, that I'm gonna be praying for you and I'm gonna ask you to pray for us as we pray for each other. The only way we're gonna be able to really make a difference is we gotta do this thing together, and as an adversarial spirit that is just not productive, I'd be very uncomfortable if I was the incoming superintendent. I would feel like I was being thrown into a briar patch. So we're gonna be praying for you as well, Dr. Alato. Somebody say amen one more time.
Amen.
I'm the pastor of Mount Olivami Church, I'm the executive director of the Mount Olivami Community Development Corporation, and I'm just here today to add my voice, express my concern for the most recent dismantling of the Office of Equity and Human Relations. Firstly, I just wanted to express my appreciation and thanksgiving for the progress that has been achieved, for the teachers, the parents, the young people, the administrators, the community that has worked together to achieve what has been achieved. I wanted to say thank God for that. Secondly, I wanted to make the point that closing the achievement gap is an ongoing shared responsibility, and so we, the accolades and the blames fall upon all of us in this room today. I'm very prayerful that, as we look at the work that's been done by the Office of Equity and Human Relations, that the difference that they made was in a great way because they had built a tremendous level of trust. They had established a great level of advocacy. The kinds of collaborative work that needs to be done is gonna require tremendous trust, tremendous relationships, and I hope that, as someone said earlier, that we won't throw the baby out with the bathwater, that we'll build on what we've achieved, that we'll stand on the shoulders of those who have worked thus far and continue to work as a collaborative team. I'm very concerned about the reorganization and fixing what didn't appear to be broke, broke, it needed to be tweaked, it needed to be strengthened, but I wasn't sure how luring it to a deputy superintendent-level responsibility would... lowering it to a deputy superintendent-level responsibility would improve the income, or how lowering it would lift it as a greater priority. In a perfect world, I really wish that there had been a more collaborative process, that I think was obvious, that if the community had been engaged, if it was more of a collaboration, I think a lot of this would have been avoided, it would have been a different atmosphere as we move forward. I think it's really about atmosphere. The parents are going to have to feel, the teachers are going to have to feel, the administrators are going to have to feel that it's real good faith, so that we work together, we can really do something that's going to be enormous, and I believe we will. I'll be praying for you, I pray you pray for me, and for all those young people who are falling through the cracks as I summarize and as I close out. We win together. If this gap is not closed, the crime, the victim cost, the cost to society, the businesses that do not come to Anaronda County, all of us lose together if we don't work hard to make this work. The spirit in which we work has to be a great part of this, so let me just thank you for the time to share, and again, God bless you and heaven smile upon you.
And thank you. And Reverend Calhoun, I want to thank you for, I know that you opened up your own facility for a lot of things. I had the opportunity to teach a class through the Community College for some non-high school graduates through the Community College who were trying to get some training in accounting, and I very much enjoyed that and was very grateful that we had the use of your space. It was a wonderful thing, and so thank you for opening up your church for that program.
Glad to do it. God bless you.
And Ms. Wanda Nottingham.
Good afternoon. This is my first time here. This is my first time experiencing all of this, and it's really making me nervous. I just want everybody to know that I do not represent any group here. I'm a parent, I'm on my lunch break, and I just wanted you all to know, the point here is I have a son, African-American son, he's 13. He is a product of Anaronda County Community, Anaronda County Schools. He is 13 years old, and he's still reading at a second grade level. That's all I have to say.
I think, I think Mr. Liverman's going to get in touch with you. He doesn't seem pleased about that.
Thanks for coming. It's always good to see parents here. Thank you.
Okay, well, that brings us to the end of public participation. We're now going to move on to item number 4.03 under action items. This is an information to action item. Do I have a motion to move this from information to action? Is there a second? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 8-0-0. All right, we're going to wait just a minute for Mr. Liverman's recommendation and let some people clear out. And Mr. Mosier texted me and asked me if I wanted to take a five-minute break after public participation, and I just noticed it.
I gotta enjoy that while I can, I really gotta. We're on item number 4.03. We've already moved this item from information to action. We now have an action item. Mrs. Perkins, your recommendation, please.
I recommend approval of the courses listed beginning with the 2014-15 school year.
So move.
Second. Is there a presentation on this item? Come on Greg, come on. Please, introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon. For the record, Brett Pruski, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, although we do not have any formal presentation, we will certainly answer any questions that you might have about these three particular.
Thank you Greg, I misrepresented the presentation part.
Are there any questions from the board about these new course approvals? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor and it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero zero. The next item on the agenda is 4.04, Monarch Charter School Contract Renewal. This is an information to action item. Is there a motion to move this from information to action?
So move.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes eight zero zero. We now have an action item. Mrs. Perkins, your recommendation, please.
I recommend that the board approve the charter renewal agreement with Monarch Academy Public Charter School Incorporated.
And is there a presentation?
There is not. I believe they're here to answer any questions that you.
Sure.
Oh, see now this time I'm wrong. There is a short presentation. You know what? This is exactly why I don't play the lottery.
You just, you mixed Greg and I up, which happens sometimes. Good morning, President Byrd, Vice President Ritchie, Ms. Perkins, members of the board. For the record, my name is Pat Crane, Senior Manager of Charter Schools. At this time, I'd like to take an opportunity to allow my colleagues to introduce themselves.
Dwayne Arby-Gass, Chief Operating Officer for the Children's Guild.
Kathy Lane, Executive Director, Alternative Education.
On February 19th, 2014, the board approved a five-year charter renewal for Monarch Academy Glen Burnie. This renewal was granted after an extensive and rigorous renewal process. Soon after that approval, all parties began working on a charter contract, which if approved today, will serve as a legally binding agreement that will guide each party with respect to their roles and responsibilities over the next five years. It should be noted that this process was highly collaborative involving senior and executive staff from AACPS, as well as representatives from the Children's Guild. The contract which you currently have before you has been reviewed by the Board's Counsel, Mr. Bennett. We are prepared to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Mrs. Ritchie.
I don't really have any question about the contract and I did read it. But I did have a question having to do, and this is something you can get back to me, I guess, on, is how did the students who have gone through the Monarch Academy, if any of them have already entered into the high schools, and how well they are meshing in with all of them? Because it is a really completely different environment in the Monarch Academy, and then going into the high school and stuff, it's a little bit of a different change for them. So I wondered how they are matriculating in. There we go.
And we have done that research. We monitored them after the first semester, and we're also monitoring them now. I'm pleased to say that the majority of students are doing exceptionally well where they are right now. We would be more than happy to forward that information to you. We've done the research down to the school they're attending, the grades that they've received, attendance, discipline, that sort of thing, so.
I wasn't really concerned about the grades because I was sure that they were gonna probably do very well with that. I was more the social aspect, which is not necessarily something you always can capture.
Sure.
You can capture a little in discipline data, but just because of the environment being such a different environment for them.
Are there any other questions? Then we have a motion on the floor that's been properly made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion passes eight zero zero. Congratulations. The next item on the agenda is 4.05, Policy Revision. First reading, Signature Programs, Policy Code IR. This is an information item only.
We have brief comments.
Okay.
Since it's a first reading. The Office of Advanced Studies and Programs brings Policy IR Signature Programs to you for first reading. Signature programs were previously addressed in Policy IP, which was recently revised to only address magnet programs. The new policy recognizes signatures as programs of choice that promote educational excellence, and provides students with diverse experiences for a focus on college and career readiness. The policy will be posted on our website for 30 days for public comment. We welcome any questions you may have.
There do not appear to be any questions at this time. We will certainly follow up with you if we have any. Alright, the next one is Policy Revision First Reading, Instructional Codes, Policy Code IA. Again, this is information only.
The Office of School Performance, the Division of Curriculum and Instruction, and the Office of Advanced Studies and Programs, brings to the board a revised instructional goals policy to provide clearly articulated instructional goals and data-based accountability to guide the teaching and learning process. This policy was last updated January 17th, 1990. This policy will be posted on our website for 30 days for public comment. We welcome any questions you may have.
Again, I don't see any questions on this one. We will follow up if we have any. 4.07, Policy Revision First Reading, Student Conduct, Policy Code JCC, Information.
The comments that Dr. Allato and I have regarding this policy apply both to this policy and the next one JD. While we will take them separately, I just wanted to tell you there's some overarching comments we wanted to make. In an effort to reform and bring consistency to student discipline policies and practices in Maryland Public Schools, the State Board conducted a two-year study to review and examine this issue. The Board's draft report was issued in February of 2012. They incorporated several sources from educational research, and the report concluded that there was little to no evidence that removing students from misbehaving improved student behavior or student safety. The report referenced studies and the work from previous state-level task forces on attendance and school safety, and emphasized that revisions to state discipline policy are directly related to student achievement and closing of the existing achievement gap. In July of 2012, a second report served as a framework for the State Board's passage of the COMAR regulations that adopt a rehabilitative discipline philosophy. The philosophy is derived from research indicating that zero tolerance policies do not work, and that higher school suspension levels predict higher rates of misbehavior in students. The report concludes that rehabilitative discipline must include best practices where support such as PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, lead to increased student availability for learning.
Our school system embraces the fostering teaching and acknowledgement of positive behaviors. We are committed to creating world-class education system where all our students graduate college and career-ready. That doesn't mean just some students, but all students. Even if that student finds himself or herself facing disciplinary measures. This should not be a barrier to allowing the student to recover from his or her mistakes and remain on track for his or her college or career. These revised policies and accompanying regulations presented to you for first reading today are aligned with the State Board's policies and regulations, and aim to keep students in school and engaged in the learning environment. They are designed to reduce the number of long-term out-of-school suspensions for nonviolent incidents, eliminate disproportionate suspensions of minority students and students with disabilities, and to ensure that all students receive appropriate educational services during suspensions or expulsion, except in most extreme cases, with identified timelines for the disciplinary process. We are focused on the interrelationship between instruction and school discipline as we continue to work to eliminate the achievement gap. These revised policies and regulations are well, as well as the new student code of conduct, align with these initiatives and philosophies. The goal, very simply, is to keep all students engaged so they'll be college and career-ready.
So that the Board is aware the student conduct policy was last revised in June 2006, and the policy sets the tone and reflects the philosophies discussed by Dr. Allato. It will be posted for 30 days for public comment, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Mr. Jackson.
I don't really have any comments. I just want to say thank you all very much, the entire staff, Jessica, Dr. Allato, for your efforts on putting this together, bringing it before the committee, and also for doing it in a timely manner so that parents can have an opportunity, and the community, and the general community, can have an opportunity to look at it before we reach the summer. So, we do appreciate the level of effort from the staff on doing that, and thank you also, Dr. Washington.
On that note, I wanted to add, because this is something that was of concern to us. We know that this came from the state very, very late, so quick work had to be made of it. Can we do sort of an extra good job of publicizing that these are available for comment?
If you'll indulge me for a second.
Okay.
I have comments that speak to that as well.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
I was saving it for 4.08, but since you took us there, we have gone to great lengths to ensure involvement from a wide variety of stakeholders and to garner their feedback. They include elementary, middle school, high school principals, the Chesapeake Regional Association of Student Councils, the Superintendent's Teen Advisory Panel, the County Council of PTA's Countywide Citizens Advisory Council, the Teachers Association of Anaronda County, the Association of Educational Leaders, the Special Education Citizen Advisory Committee, the Parent Involvement Advisory Council. And in addition to that, the release that went out regarding this meeting included these policies, and that was emailed to more than 49,000 parents of students for our school system.
That's great, yes.
We welcome their feedback, and we look forward to this being an interactive process as we try to improve this for students.
Thank you very much, because I know that that was one of our concerns, is that the timing of this, you know, it's the end of the school year, are they gonna pay attention? But the more importance we put on it, that we really want to know what people think, I think the better, so thank you very much. Alright, and so I don't see any more comments from Phil Board members. So, again, 4.08, Policy Revision First Reading, Student Suspensions and Expulsion, Policy Code JD, Information. Basically, you have the same comments for that. Were there any questions about that item? Okay, alright. Then, moving on, we have Policy Revision First Reading, School Uniforms, Policy Code JCDA. This is information. Not quite the dress code that was brought up earlier today, but has some similarities.
Absolutely. The Office of School Performance brings Policy JCDA, School Uniforms. This policy and its accompanying regulation provide details related to the adoption process, the dissolution process, and the enforcement of school uniforms. The policy was last updated March 16th, 2005, and it will be posted on the website 30 days, public comment. If you have any questions or concerns, we are open to them.
I was just interested, how many schools have school uniforms? Don't have to get that now, but if you get back and, and if you could tell us if this, well, I could probably figure it out, but I mean, instead of sending me 17 schools, if you just say five has this.
I'll give them by level.
I think I did read that another middle school was just added to the ranks. Another middle school was just voted recently to add for next year.
Was it the one that was here today?
No, no it was not. Alright. The next item, 4.10, Regulation Review, Bullying, Cyberbullying, Harassment, and Intimidation, Hazing, Bias Behavior. Regulation Code JCCA-RA. This is an information item.
The Division of Student Support Services brings Regulation JCCA-RA to provide guidance and standards related to bullying behavior. While this regulation was not updated too long ago in March 10th of 2010, this is a hot topic, and we continue to adapt to the evolving guidance around these topics to ensure we are appropriately handling cases that involve this type of undesirable behavior. We will answer any questions you have about this regulation.
Ms. Ritchie. Just so people understand, this is a regulation, not a policy, and it's under the purview of the superintendent, and they make the regulations, but we wanted, we, we as, I think I can speak, the policy committee was extremely encouraging to bring this forward so that people fully understood and could have some input and so forth like that, and so. But, just so the public understands, this is not a policy, we won't vote on this, it's mainly just for information and that, but we want people to understand what this is, and to please take the time to look at it and to review it and to and to submit any, you know, concerns or questions so that we can address that before we get too far down the road.
Alright, well, I think that takes us to the end of our... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. I just want you, the staff, to take a few moments to address on page two, under B, where we say if there's a posting in the public forum where others can see it, then it is repeated behavior. I think we, I think we owe that some clarity for the greater community, just to explain exactly what we mean and how significant a change from the last revision of this. So if you'd take a few seconds and talk about that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. There's some question about, specifically when we talk about cyberbullying, previous bullying language spoke to repeated behavior. And what this statement does is says, if you post something on a public forum, it is repeated behavior. Because you are opening yourself up to allow every other person that views that to see it, so it's being viewed by several people. So basically, you put something on a public forum that is a bullying-type behavior against a student, and it is by definition a repeated behavior.
So really, once you, once you launch it, there is no taking it back. It's out there, and it's repeated behavior. Thank you so much.
And, on the same vein, Mr. Jackson, there will be some, professional development is the word we use for employees, but some educational processes to ensure that students understand, that Student Support Services is working on lessons to make sure students understand this new.
New language. Thank you very, very much.
Ms. Ritchie.
Well, just to be real clear, because we talk about social forums, we're talking about Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, any other new little thing that might be happening down there, any place you're putting it out on the cyberspace. If you have a personal blog that you're allowing 5,000 people to look at, that is all considered. If you post something there, that's a public, if anybody can see it other than you, it's a public area, so just to make sure people understand, when we talk about social forums, it's all of those and those that have not been invented yet.
But, but if I emailed it to you, that's not a public forum, because only you saw it.
Unless it was emailed to a distribution.
Right, but if it was an email just between you and me?
Correct.
That would not be necessarily considered.
Repeated behavior.
Or repeated.
It could be.
Right.
Unless I then forwarded it to everyone else. Okay. I think that brings us to the end of the regulations and policies. Our next item is 4.11, Eastport Georgetown East and Park Elementary Schools and Westmead Early Education Center Kindergarten Additions, Educational specification and Schematic Design. This is an information to action item. Do I have a motion to move this from information to action? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes eight zero zero. We now have an action item. Mrs. Perkins, your recommendation, please.
I recommend approval of the Eastport Georgetown East, Park Elementary Schools, and Westmead Early Education Center Kindergarten Additions, Educational specification and schematic design.
Second. We now have a motion on the floor. Is there a presentation?
There is not, but I will say good afternoon, and I'm Lisa Seaman Crawford, Director of Facilities, and with me is.
Larry Albert, Supervisor of Planning, Design, and Construction.
Are there any board questions? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? Oh, there is a question, Mr. Webb.
Just got a question about Annapolis Elementary. Is that still on schedule?
Yes, it is. The outside does look a little rough, but the inside looks very, very good.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Nally is available if you need some extra help. Summer's coming.
Always use cleaners.
Okay, so is there any public comment on this item? Okay, we have a motion that's been properly made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero zero. Next item is Glen Burnie High School Open Space Enclosures, Educational specification and schematic design. This is an information to action item. Do I have a motion to move this from information to action? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes eight zero zero. We now have an action item. Mrs. Perkins, your recommendation, please.
I recommend approval of the Glen Burnie High School Open Space Enclosure, Educational Specs, and Schematic Design.
Is there a motion to approve Mrs. Perkins' recommendation? Is there a second? Is there a presentation?
No, there is not.
No.
Are there any questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. It's been properly made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero zero. Next item is 4.13, 2014 Educational Facilities Master Plan. This is an information to action item. Is there a motion to move this item from information to action? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero zero. We now have an action item. Mrs. Perkins, your recommendation, please.
I recommend approval, Educational Facilities Master Plan.
Is there a presentation?
There's just a brief introduction, very brief.
Scott Schuler, Student Demographics and Planning Specialist.
Starting in 1982, the state of Maryland adopted a process for the administration of the Public School Construction Program, requiring each local education agency to submit by July 1 every year, an update of an educational facilities master plan. It also requires that each LEA's annual and six-year capital improvement program be in accord with the educational facilities master plan. Included in the educational facilities master plan are five mandatory elements. One, the goals, standards, and guidelines for the school system facilities. Two, an inventory and evaluation of existing school facilities. Three, population, enrollment data, and projections for the next 10 years. Four, a listing and analysis of the facility's utilization and facility needs for the next seven years, showing use of existing schools and future needs. Five, a community analysis, including a description of location by census tract, zoning, and proposed water sewer, as well as general development or master plan goals and objectives. The projections included in the master plan are reviewed and approved by the Maryland State Department of Planning and Anaronda County Office of Planning and Zoning. And just in general, the elementary school population increased 8% between September 2010 and September 2013. Middle school students increased by 1%, and the high school population remained stable. And we'd be happy to answer any question.
Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just really have one question. I've looked at this now for a couple of times, and I haven't, I haven't caught it before, but could you help explain to me a little bit under the state capacity utilization section? We don't necessarily list any of our charter or contract schools or those kinds of things relative to state capacity or percentage of utilization. Is there a reason why, and if there is, do we cover them at all from a facility standpoint in our master facilities plan? As far as their utilization.
Oh, we do. It's actually in the back, I forgot what the last tab is, Other Facilities.
Okay.
That's where all of the things like Arlington Echo show up, and includes our charter schools. So, if you go back to page, let me find a page here for you. You want Charter Schools, go just before the appendix tab, and you'll see on top, the last one is Monarch, because it's alphabetical, and they have a state rate of capacity of 618. It's calculated the same way that we would calculate it for our schools. And we go through the same projections with them. We actually work also with the schools, not all of them, but in particular with the charter schools, because they have staggered enrollments and backfills and things like that. So, you have Monarch there, and if you flip the page the other direction, you'll see Chesapeake Science Point, which has a state rate of capacity of 553.
So, next year, we'll have the first contract school, so we don't have to account for that because they haven't opened their doors, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you all. I have a question, and this may be for Ms. Perkins or staff. There's rumblings that the county executive or county council may be putting in money for a maintenance study or backlog, something they did last year. Has staff had any discussion about that or aware? I'd like to get an update at some point. I know, once again, that was in the paper, so I don't know if you've read it or not, but I would, I think the board kind of needs to know what's going on with that. I know that it had a 10-year shelf life in 2015, 2016, but it would be nice to have that discussion, to know where we stand, so I don't know if anybody could provide that information.
I can tell you that we have not brought it to the board, because it has not come full circle to us. I would also tell you, don't believe everything you read in the paper.
Okay, I don't see any other questions from the board. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion that's been properly made and seconded. All those in favor of approving the Superintendent's recommendation? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero zero. That moves us along to our, to our review items, which is 5.01, Award of Contracts. We do have a packet of contracts to review. Are there any questions about any of the contracts on this list? Apparently not. So, there you go. We reviewed the contracts. All right, moving on. Was there any public comment on the review of contracts? No, okay. We're done with the review of contracts. All right, next, we have our consent items. 6.01 to now 6.06, because we did remove item 6.07 earlier in the meeting. These are information to action items. Do I have a motion to bundle and move from information to action items 6.01 to 6.06?
So move.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0-0. We now have action items 6.01 through 6.06. Mrs. Perkins, your recommendation, please.
I recommend approval of 6.01 through 6.06.
We now have a motion on the floor, I mean, we now have a properly made motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Is there a presentation on this item?
There is not.
Okay. Are there any questions of the board on these items? Seeing none, is there any public comment on any of these items? Seeing none, we have a motion that's been properly made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 8-0-0. That brings us to the end of our agenda. I do want to announce that the next Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, June 18th, 2014, at 10:00 a.m., and that is an unusual time for our second monthly meeting, so please mark that on your calendars, 10:00 a.m. It's not an evening meeting. Our next policy meeting will be on Wednesday, June 11th, at 8:00 a.m. here in the boardroom. And the next budget committee meeting is Tuesday, June 10th, at 5:00 p.m., most likely in center three. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor? We are adjourned.